Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this Board of County Commissioners redistricting meeting to order. We're all present here, so it's not hybrid and no roll call is necessary. The purpose of this meeting is to determine which of the proposed redistricting maps to take to public advertising pursuant to county charter. I will now recognize Deputy County Attorney Mary Helen Ferris to provide opening remarks.
Good morning, Commissioners. We have your in-class.
Yes, we need your mic. My mic, I don't think, is on.
Is that better?
Yes. We can hear you, actually.
Since the last board discussion, staff has held four open houses, one in each of the districts, on the maps DE and F that the board chose to take to open house at the last board meeting on redistricting. The public has commented, I believe that you've received those comments, both on the county website and we also received some written comments. And as you said, the purpose of this is just to direct staff which map or maps you want to advertise for the public hearings in November. And with that...
That's it, huh? Okay. Well, now to a public comment. The Board welcomes comments from citizens at the redistricting meeting. The Chair will call on speakers by name in the order of which their requests to speak have been made. Prioritizations on a first-come, first-served basis... Sorry. All virtual speakers will be muted upon joining the meeting and will be unmuted after being recognized by the Chair by name. Up to three minutes is allowed for each speaker. We have only one speaker this morning, Deborah Kaufman. You're recognized.
Thank you. Thank you for providing this opportunity. I am here representing the League of Women Voters of Hillsborough County. On behalf of the League, I call upon you today to be mindful of the foundational principles of fair redistricting. It is especially important that the process be transparent above board and that you take seriously the opinions expressed by the residents of our county. This process has no room for political bias, racial or language bias, or gerrymandering in any way to achieve a perceived advantage to one candidate or another. The League will be observing your deliberations closely to ensure that such practices as cracking and packing are not employed for any reason. We will continue to make our voices heard as you proceed so that the districts created are compact, equal in population, and were practical, attentive to natural, political, and geographical boundaries. We may, in future, as this process proceeds, take a position on one map or another depending upon how the process evolves. However, at this time, we are not going to do that, and we're letting the process go as planned. The League in Hillsborough County stands ready to assist in any way we can to help you in this effort. As stakeholders in the process, we are willing to dispense any information you need to get out and to provide input as needed as we go forward to ensure that the new districts are formulated in a way that realizes the ideal of one person, one vote. Our goal, as I'm sure yours is, is that each voter in Hillsborough County can feel confident that their vote will make a difference and that their voice will be heard. Thank you again for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. And with that, I will recognize Enterprise GIS Manager Dan Hardy briefly to introduce three additional maps that were submitted by the September 17 deadline.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here this morning to present three map changes that we've had since our last meeting. We've had a change to Map E, a change to Map F, and also an additional map introduced, Map G. On screen, you see the proposed revised Map E. Map E has a 39% black concentration in District 3 and a 7.7% population variance. On screen now is the revised Map F. Map F has a 38.7% black concentration in District 3 and a 9.3% population variance. Map G is currently on screen. This is a new map. This map also has a 39% population distribution or concentration in District 3 and a 7.3% population variance. I will be here to answer any questions that may come up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So, at this point, we're going to move to board discussion, but before we... Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Commissioner White has a question.
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Hardy. Mr. Hardy, there are a number of various geometric tests that are used as tests of compactness that are useful in redistricting applications. Did you apply any of those tests of compactness to these maps?
Yes, sir, we did. We used a combination of tests, most predominantly convex hull. And given the general nature and size of the county as a whole, it was determined that these weren't terribly useful metrics. There is no federal standards that we're aware of that should be applied. These are just different mathematical methodologies to ensure or check against a large gerrymandering, and those were not employed or part of our criteria for this process.
And I'm sorry, what was the primary measure that you put to use?
It was the convex hull method.
Okay. All right. And what were the results of that in this case? I know you've opined that it's not particularly useful in a county of this size, but what did you see in terms of results when you applied that measure or test?
I apologize, sir. I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I can provide them to the Board afterward.
Yeah, and I think, remember, I kind of tongue-in-cheek said when we first kicked off this process that this isn't high school math we're talking about. So, I know I, for one, am going to need a refresher when you share that data. So, I'd like to not only see the data, but your opinion on what the data means in each of the... In the case of each of the maps that are sent out for advertisement today.
Yes, sir, we can certainly provide that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I will take a second here just to refer to the prior meeting. I wanted to let this be known, because once I saw some of the video of the prior meeting, I know we just kind of flashed the maps there, but I wanted to say for the record that when it came to my map at the prior meeting, being E, instead, Map A was put up on the screen and not my Map E. And I'd like to also further say that at one point at the prior meeting, it was said that one map divides Progress Village, and there was an implication about which map that was. And I'd like to state for the record that that was Map A, which was a staff map, not my map. All the other maps did not, including mine, none of them, I don't think, divided Progress Village but for that map. So, just for the record, I like to make that clear. And at this time, I see... I don't know. Any other Commissioners like to make comments at this time? Do we want to have a motion then on what maps to move forward?
I'm...
Oh, I'm sorry. I did not... Oh, okay. Here we go. There you are. Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you. This has been a really interesting process. And the one thing I did notice is there's... In all of the options, there's some consistency with what we had, and then there's, you know, some massive differences. And the things that I focus on is, you know, where people are and where they're going. Paying attention to affordable housing issues and seeing the migration of our communities. I think it's important to look at that trend. And the three maps that have been presented with the revisions by the Commissioners seem to have a sensitivity to that. And so, not to disregard what the staff has provided us in Map D, but I'd like to make a motion that we present to the public each of the Commissioner-provided revised maps. It's actually, at the end of the day, it's our job to do this, and since the Commissioners, three Commissioners, have actually put forward maps with some comments that we've heard in the past, I'm going to make a motion that we put out to advertising the revised Map E, the revised Map F, and the presented Map G for consideration by our citizenry.
We have a motion by Commissioner Overman, seconded by Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner Myers should recognize.
Good morning, and thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'd like to thank the staff for your input in attending the meetings, the four meetings that were held in the districts. I certainly appreciate that from you and also for drawing the maps and making sure that we had the necessary maps at the time to review prior to the meeting. With that being said, just like to follow up on my comments from our last meeting, as I shared with us, that these maps relates to the districts, District 1, 2, 3, 4. We all know that when we had to complete the census data, it related to redrawn the districts. And so, therefore, I'd like to make a substitute motion that Map F and G be advertised to the public.
We have a substitute motion by Commissioner Myers. Do we have a second?
I'll second, ma'am.
Okay. We have a substitute motion by Commissioner Myers, seconded by Commissioner Hagan. So, you would only have two maps. You would have Map... Say those again.
Map F and Map G.
Okay. And with that, Commissioner Smith, would you be speaking to...
Yes. Thank you. I think I need to turn this volume down. I won't support the substitute motion. I'll be supporting the original motion if the substitute fails. I think it's important to move all three Commissioner-presented maps forward. In fact, the revised Map E is my favorite so far. And I would just point out that, you know, the staff Map D was a good, you know, a good stab at it in the early stages, but the revised Maps E, revised Map F, the G map that was presented later, got to take advantage of the staff's work and the prior work and the prior discussion where Map D has not. Map D is the oldest one here and has the least black population percentage for District 3. And so, you know, I think as the maps evolved, they've been able to really fine-tune the goals that we had for representation and looking at the community by community. And so, I think the revised and latest Commissioner maps should be all brought forward to the public in order to... That we can have further revision. In fact, I was just talking with a community group last night representing minority concerns who preferred Map E, wholeheartedly, the revised version. And so, you know, I wouldn't want to have that eliminated at this stage. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner White?
Madam Chair, just as a point of clarification, Commissioner Myers, your motion is to send Map F revised and Map G for advertisement, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes. Thank you. When we talk about the African-American community and you look at the maps, Map G and Map E, particularly the University of South Florida area, I don't know if you all recall, the African-Americans that were living in West Tampa in the public housing, they all moved out in the university area. Now, the maps that we're looking at today, you know, we say we're in support of African-Americans and all, but look at the map. The map show, and a part of Temple Terrace was in District 3 as well. So, if you want to be supportive of the African-American community, we need to place that back into the district that it was in right now before we receive the new changes, because the African-Americans are still living out in the university area today. So, I do have a concern about that. So, in all fairness, we cannot get into somewhat political that we want to take from the African-American community to put into District 2 so that we are diluting the African-American votes from Temple Terrace and the university area that goes into District 2, because that was not in District 2 in the original map. So, I just want to bring that to your attention. We, as the African-American community, we are paying attention. I've received many calls regarding that. If you read the comments that staff received from our redistricting meetings, Map F, and these are from the written comments, was the most balanced map and the most favorite map from our written comments. And so, I share that with us so that we will be mindful as we sit here and always figure a way how we want to get rid of the African-American community. It's just not going to happen today. We have to figure a way, again, for inclusion, diversity, and equity, and that's what these maps should represent. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Hagan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Commissioner Myers, thank you very much for your comments. I appreciate your leadership on this matter. I respect your advocacy for the African-American community as well as the best interest of all of Hillsborough. I have reviewed all the maps again. Frankly, your map remains the most thoughtful and fair one submitted. It reflects commitment to our community, inherent fairness, and our faithful adherence to the guiding principles the Board set forth. I'm going to keep my remarks brief, but I'm going to be extremely candid. Elections have consequences. As the longest-serving member on this Board, no one understands that more than me. The League of Women Voters, Representative earlier, mentioned this shouldn't be about political bias, but as I said during our last discussion, and Commissioner Myers briefly touched on it, this has become a political process. As much as we want to publicly ignore it, redistricting has become extremely partisan. It's the worst-kept secret here at County Center. Every person sitting on this dais knows the primary intent of Maps E and G is to make District 1 solidly Democrat and to make District 2 as strong of a Democrat district as possible. That's why the UCDC area and USF historically, or a African-American community that has historically been in District 3, suddenly finds its way in District 2, Commissioner Myers. I understand where this is coming from and frankly expected it. Politics is a full-contact sport, but to suggest otherwise is simply an insult to everyone's intelligence.
Commissioner Overman?
Thank you. And just for a point of clarification, I want to make sure it's clear. Commissioner Myers, I think I understood you to say that historically, and I don't disagree about the migration to the university area based on past housing decisions that caused a migration up into that area, and I do support the effort of making sure that those folks are represented in this process. But based on the original lines, if... I mean, unless I'm seeing something that I didn't see, Temple Terrace has never been part of District 3. And I saw... Just want to, for a point of clarification, the original lines on all my maps would have indicated that Temple Terrace had previously been in District 2 and has been for the last period of time. Am I mistaken there? Because I'm looking at the lines...
Yes. I just ran, and I had voters that voted for me from Temple Terrace. It was a precinct in this last election.
It may be... It may be that you ran and had some voters, but maybe we could have staff answer that because you can see the lines. Temple Terrace is primarily...
It's not... Yes, not... Could you guys... Because staff has...
I think there might be a little split in Temple Terrace, but primarily, most of Temple Terrace has... Is currently in District 2.
That was my prediction. That's why I was like, am I reading this wrong? Because it does appear as though in our original district lines for the last, you know, 10 years, that Temple Terrace has actually been in District 2. Is that a majority of it? Let's just put that...
If I could ask Dan to address that. I don't have the maps in front of me.
Okay. Well, maybe bring up... If you want to bring up Map F to point that out, I believe the maps do show where the original lines were.
Yes.
So, that was what I was going off of. Because one of the things I have sensitive to is, you know, when someone lives in a specific district, they relate to that district, you know? I've lived in District 3 for most of my life.
Here's a good... Here's a good...
The lines and the dotted lines would indicate where the original lines were, correct?
That's correct, Commissioners. The blue and white line that's dashed is the current boundary as it exists today.
Okay.
The dashed green line represents the city limits of Temple Terrace. So, Temple Terrace was split between District 3 and District 2 as it stands today.
Okay. So, if I'm understanding what you just said, the green line just to the east of the blue dotted line is the borderline of Temple Terrace?
Yes, ma'am. The green dashed line is the borderline of Temple Terrace.
Okay. But historically, most, I mean, a very large section of Temple Terrace has been actually in District 2.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. I just needed to get a better understanding of what was presented. So, thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Okay. So, Commissioner Hagan has identified that Map F is the best one for a Republican running in his district, but at the same time lamenting that the process is... That other maps are not as good for his district and somehow lamenting that there are people talking about politics in this while he's talking about his own political advantage in this. Okay. As to USF, and thank you for, Commissioner Overman, for pointing out that Temple Terrace is largely solidly in District 2 currently. And meanwhile, I just want to point out while we're talking about history and where the minority voters are, that in 2001, when USF was originally put in District 3 while taking out black voters in another district, in another area from District 3, the NAACP sued. The NAACP sued when USF was put into District 3 because they found that discriminatory because while the population of black people was similar to another area that had been removed, they held, and the Tribune editorialized that they held correctly, and the NAACP held that those... That population was transient and didn't vote in the same numbers that would help them maintain... Help our county maintain a minority-majority district. So, it's... I just want to point out that it has not always been held that it was important for USF to be in District 3. In fact, when it was put in District 3, NAACP sued to stop it. They were not successful, but they were against it. So, you know, I still will say that I spoke with an important group of African-American leaders just last night who solidly preferred Map E, and I will do what I can to keep that in the running in order that we can get as much public feedback as possible on all the maps the Commissioners have proposed. Thank you.
Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Because of the compact nature of this process, because of when the census numbers were released and how quickly, we need to make a decision on what to advertise. And I just want to remind everyone, that's because our charter forces us to have this done by December 31st. We can't move this into next year even if we wanted to. I felt after the last meeting that with the deadline looming for map submissions, it would be a good idea to present something that I at least viewed as attempting to reach some kind of compromise between Maps E and Maps F. Map F has some great features to it, as far as I'm concerned. The lines between District 1 and District 3 in the city of Tampa, I think for the most part, made good sense. I loved the idea of wrapping it around to include the Port Red Wing area down to Big Ben Road because I think that that area has more in common with the port and the industrial areas perhaps than the rest of South County. And interestingly, to Commissioner Smith's point at our last meeting about dividing Gibsonton, I went and looked and saw that there really is a very relatively small population living west of 41 in Gibsonton, and indeed, the greatest amount of it is industrial. I also thought that it was important to leave USF in District 3, where it is now, because of the argument that was made that it's very important that we try to make sure that all of our districts have major economic drivers in them. On the other hand, there were some elements of District E, excuse me, Map E, that I also thought were worthy of preserving, particularly the treatment of Temple Terrace, because in my experiments with producing a map, I could not get over the 39% threshold if I put Temple Terrace into District 3. I just couldn't... It didn't work. The second thing is that the tail down in Riverview is a place that, at least to my observation, there has been a lot of movement of the African-American community to that area, so it was appropriate to include that in District 3. And then the final thing, of course, which we talked about in the last meeting, is Apollo Beach. Beach. I think that having represented Apollo Beach for eight months, the one thing I can say definitively is that I think people there share a lot in common with people in Ruskin and Sun City Center in terms of sort of what the totality of their interests are. They very much are affected by the water issues and the transportation issues and the school concurrency issues that we deal with in South County. So for that reason, I constructed or attempted to construct a map that married the best of two worlds. What my fear is, and my fear was earlier, is that because of the fact that we're going to be stuck with what we advertise, that if we get to the end of this process and there's wildly divergent public comment, which I would submit to you after reading this, the comment is all over the place according to a lot of these issues, it may be necessary for us to have a map that starts with elements of the original two so that any kind of compromise doesn't have to necessarily deviate too much from what we advertise. So my view is that particularly given that USF and Temple Terrace and Apollo Beach and to some degree the lines in Carrollwood and the eastern district boundaries are all at issue, I think it would be a good idea to vet all three maps. And so respectfully, I'm not going to vote for the substitute motion. I think it's important for all three Commissioner maps to move forward, and hear what the public has to say, because if we don't have Map E in the mix, there isn't then a discussion about USF and Temple Terrace both being in District 2. We lose that option. I'm not saying I'm for that option. I'm saying I think based on the public comment, we got to vet all of it before we make the decision. So that's where I'm coming down on this, and I think that, I think that giving the public three maps with these varying differences will ferret out hopefully some comment that's consistent, that can move us into one direction. Thank you.
Thank you. I think at this point, I'm going to speak. I also will not support the substitute motion. I think we have to move forward the revised Map EF and the new Map G to public comment and have that looked at. Each of those maps, Map F has a 38.7% black population, Map E 39%, along with Map G 39%. Those are the two highest percentages that we have, and we had stated as a goal, zero target, zero retrogression in terms of trying to ensure that District 3 does continue to have a very strong opportunity for a black representative from District 3. And Map E and G, at least by the numbers, those are the two maps that would do that. And Map D is significantly below that. Also in terms of, I was very aware of the lawsuit that happened in 2000 to eliminate USF by the NAACP to have, to not have USF in District 3. I was a legislative aide as well, to Sarah Romeo, in the state legislature in, in that area. That's the area now represented by Fentress Driscoll. It's been modified somewhat, but at that, in that state, and it's probably true still with Representative Driscoll's seat, that it was very important for them that Temple Terrace, USF, and New Tampa all be together. That's what that House seat still is, I believe, and has stayed concentrated that way. As well, the City Council seat is represented in the same way. It's Councilman Viera's seat is, also has all of those. And as Commissioner Overman stated, Temple Terrace, and as we have verified, Temple Terrace has always been part of District 2. That historically has been true. This changed in 2000, but in order when you balance these things out, I mean, the most, when I was an aide to Kathy Castor, when she was a Commissioner before, that whole part of District 2 or District 1 that went up to the Pasco border, that didn't exist. And it was, it was still a sprawling district at that time going down to Apollo Beach and Ruskin. And when you make adjustments that make sense in District 1, you come out with other things when you're doing population balance and still striving to get a black access, strong access seat in District 3 in every way. So those were all things that were guiding me as I looked at this, and, you know, I will be supporting moving on revised maps, F and EF and the new Map G when, if, you know, the first substitute, or the first substitute motion is defeated. Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Okay, I want to correct the record on a few things. First of all, yes, Temple Terrace proper, the C lines have always been in District 2. However, the Temple Terrace general area, particularly West 56, that area, a lot of the folks there either align themselves or consider themselves in Temple Terrace, although they may not technically live in, you know, in Temple Terrace proper, but that happens throughout Hillsborough County. Where do you live? Tampa, where you're actually in, unincorporated Hillsborough. Well, they consider themselves Temple Terrace. That area has always been in District 3. Now we find it in District 2. So I'm quite certain that's where Commissioner Myers is going to. With respect to Commissioner Smith, her comments are accurate in that Map F would be the best for the Republican Party. However, that is immaterial. Here's the distinction. I didn't draw a map. I've never drawn a map. And I certainly didn't draw a map that puts me in a different, in a different district that's self-serving like Commissioner Kemp, and I did not draw a map that helps my political party like Commissioner Cohen. That's the distinction. I didn't draw a map. Now, again, I don't know what, who Commissioner Smith is talking to, but every African-American leader I've spoken with overwhelmingly support Map F. And with all due respect to Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Kemp, nobody understands District 3 and the African-American community better than Gwen Myers, and before her, it was Les Miller and Tom Scott. Now, Commissioner Cohen made a comment that in his map, he was trying to reach a compromise. I just want to point out drawing original Carrollwood, which has always been in District 2, into District 1 is anything but trying to reach a compromise. And while yes, Map G does put USF area into District 3, it's still, there's areas around the UCDC area that are primarily African-American that now find themselves in District 2.
Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Hagan, you couldn't have said it any better. When it comes to the African-American community, at the 12th hour, we go find the African-American people to get our point across and to get the help that we needed for issues. I've spoken with a lot of African-Americans since we've been talking about redistricting and supporting my map. And this is normally what happens. When the community that doesn't look like me, we come into the African-American community and try to convince us what we need. You should do this, and this would help you. And the minute the people that don't look like me get what they want, they forget about the African-American community. We still exist. We still exist today. And that's why I said the inclusion, equity, and diversity is important. It can't be for just to get what we want and think the African-American community is not paying attention. For those of you who have political aspirations, I guarantee you right now, the African-American community is tuned in to see how this vote is going to occur and the other votes that's going to come up in November. We are sick and tired as an African-American community to be used only when we want to be used. It has stopped. That is no longer going to continue in the African-American community. I want to make that real clear. We are talking about what we are tired of. Only want to come into our community when it's election time, redistricting time, okay? And yes, we had one that come in, in District 3 the other night, African-American community, but we didn't show up to any other districts, only the African-American community. What message does that send? I want to show the African-American community, oh, I care. Why? I'm showing up now because of the issue at hand. We need, if you're going to show up and support the African-American community, then you need to show up all the time when the African-American community, we have something. Not when you want us to do something. Are you saying Map E is the best map because you just met with the African-American community last night? Okay? Why? It's a map on the table. We have other issues in our community. Let's be fair. When it comes to the District 2 map, think about it. At the federal level, we have Republicans and we have Democrats. Here at the local level, we spending all our time trying to figure out, oh, can we get another African-American to run for District 2? Well, you got to win the seat. You can't create something. This board don't appoint an African-American person to District 2. There's only two Republicans that I know here in Hillsborough County that are liked by Republicans and Democrats. That is Chef Chad Cronister, Cronister, and Commissioner Ken Hagan. They cross for both. I don't know any other Republican that Democrats support on both sides. Okay? So I want us to go back and think about it. At the federal level, what do we have? And we're spending all this time just to prevent for two taking from the African-American community. It's not right. I end my comments there, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And again, I'll just emphasize that Map E and Map G are 39% black population. Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
I am really hesitant to say anything, but I will say, I hear you, Commissioner Myers. I moved to District 3, not understanding the politics of it, but moved to it because I wanted to live in a, and represent, in my advocacy, a diversified community. I grew up in black communities. I attempt to listen before I start making recommendations, and I have enjoyed working with you on issues that the black community has. You know, housing diversification, gentrification, food deserts, lack of daycare, lack of resources, and the discrimination that historically our policies have harmed communities in not only our affordable housing policies where we relocate folks from where they are outside of their community, where, and we haven't invested in transit in order to make sure that everyone has an equal opportunity to be successful in our community. So I'm, I am a little frustrated by some of the comments, but I do understand it because I hear it. I hear it often, that we only show up when we need a vote. And I, and I respect that concept, but I also want to make sure that we recognize that just because I'm not black doesn't mean I'm not paying attention. And I have made the decision not to run in District 3 because I do respect the fact that this board needs to be represented by someone that can represent the black community and the black vote. I do agree that it's important to make sure that our focus is making sure the black vote is heard, and all three maps come very close to the same number of making sure that there is a concentrated black voter representation. The interesting part about it is the one that has the least number of votes is Map F and District 3. And that's why I'm challenged by sort of the methodology. So I appreciate, I appreciate what you've said, but I think it is important that we give our citizens three choices to consider in their communities, where they've moved to as a consequence of our policies, to be able to represent where they are now and where affordability will, will actually drive a lot of our population growth, to make sure that those folks that make that choice have their voices heard. And thank you very much for your comments, because I do appreciate them.
Commissioner Myers, did you push your button again? No? Okay. Okay. Seeing no further comments, at this time, we have a substitute motion with Commissioner Myers, seconded by Commissioner Hagan. We can, please record your, seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion paled 2 to 5. Commissioners Cohen, Kemp, Overman, Smith, and White voted no.
Okay. And with that, we'll move back to the main motion. We have a motion with Commissioner Overman, seconded by Commissioner Cohen, and I see Commissioner White. You're recognized.
Yes, Madam Chair. I think all my comments will be related to the motion. There's been a lot of talk about the percentage of African-Americans in District 3 on the three maps. I'd like to ask Mr. Hardy if he's still available. I think there's been frankly too much made of that issue. I'm looking at 2 39s and a 38.7. In the case of our county and our population, is that a statistically significant difference? Or are they all three the same, statistically speaking?
I'm not entirely sure I followed the question, Commissioner.
Well, there's the concept of statistical significance when you're looking at a statistical test, and in a county of our size, when I see a 39, a 39, and a 38.7, I see three equal districts that are equal in size. I don't think the .3 percentage points makes a difference. Is that right? Do you have any data that would allow you to answer that question?
I do not. I can tell you that they are within the, within the board's guidance.
Okay, well, let's.
Each of the maps.
Well, let's do this. I didn't speak during the last round of comments. My vote today is all about process. I just want all three of these to go out to public so that we can get further input, further public comment, but I'd like to see two things if this motion passes. I want to see the data and a staff narrative on the compactness test issue that I asked about, and I want to know if 39, 39, and 38.7 statistically speaking, whether or not they're equal. I think they are. I think we're looking at three maps where District 3 is equal in size in each of the three scenarios. So those are two pieces of information that I'm going to be looking for, but my vote today is all about process. Let's send the three out. Let's get further input. I am not married to any of these maps just yet. I'm looking at E revised, F revised, and G. There's no harm in gathering more, more feedback from the public, but I saw the staff that's here live, particularly Mr. Wagner, nodding. He seems to understand the two pieces of information that I'm looking for, and by all means, I know that'll be shared with the entire board. So that's my feedback, but my vote today is a process-driven vote. But my vote today is a process-driven vote.
Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Actually, thank you for that, for those, that request, because I also have a need to better understand, and on our evaluation, there's the population variance as depicted on the map. There's that number, too. And between E, F, and G, E represents 7.7% as a variance, F represents 9.3% as a variance, and G represents 7.3 as a variance. Could I get variance explained, just because I would like to get more clarity on what that really means? Because I think that might address some of your questions, Commissioner White. That's why I was.
Right. Under the federal case law on one person, one vote, there's a 10% deviation, and it's not, the court doesn't call it a safe harbor, that's my term, that if you're under less than 10% deviation, then that is legally defensible.
Okay.
So, all of these are legally defensible.
Okay. But help me understand the variance. What, how is that actually? I mean, it's just a function of the populations between each of, all of the populations?
Correct.
Not just the black vote, but all of the population changes among all the different districts?
Correct.
Okay. That helps. Because we do have a lot of diversity in Hillsborough County. And I think if, if, yes, I'm very concerned about the black vote, but there's several other categories here that have representation that is significant. And I think we do need to pay attention to that as well. So, variance does become an issue, and I think that might address some of the data that Commissioner White has asked for, to make sure that we're clear about what that number means and why it's important to not only the black vote, but to additional diversity within our community. So, I'll stop there. Thank you.
Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you. And for the record, that does not answer my question. I just think we've made too much of, well, my map has the highest percentage of black residents in District 3. I think the three maps statistically, or District 3 has an equal percentage of black voters, 39, 39, and 38.7. If I'm wrong, if that .3% difference makes a statistical significance, then I'm wrong. Then, then please tell me. But I want the experts on staff to tell us whether or not that's the case. But I think if staff tells us that District 3 statistically is equal in size with all three maps, I think we should just stop the bantering about, well, mine has the highest percentage in District 3. If they're found to be statistically equal, we should just treat them from here forward as statistically equal, if that's what staff tells us.
And with that, well, I would, I just saw that Commissioner Cohen, I'll call on you in a minute, but I'm not sure that in terms of legal qualifications, the staff can deem something like that, you know?
They, they absolutely can. There's all kinds of statistical tests that'll mathematically answer a question of statistical significance.
Okay.
There's T tests, there's P values, there's chi-squared tests. I mean, there's all sorts of things that they can apply. I just want a mathematical answer. Mathematically, is, does District 3 have an equal percentage of African-American population statistically across the three maps? I think Mr. Wagner understands what I'm looking for. I'm looking for a mathematical answer, not, not a legal opinion, not any other sort of opinion. Mathematically, does District 3 have the same percentage of African-American voters in each of the three maps? It's pretty simple, and there are, there are mathematical tests that can give us a mathematical answer. Yes, they're equal mathematically, or no, they're not equal mathematically. That's all I'm looking for.
Okay. And I just wanted to say, when I raise this, there's been, in terms of the map that I worked on, some notion somehow that it was actually inferior in that manner, and that's one reason I bring that up. But, I mean, you can see the raw numbers, too. There is basically about an 8,000 difference in the terms, in terms of the number, pure number of black populations. That's, you know, a possible 8,000 votes from black people that live in that district. But at any rate, at this point, I think we have Commissioner Cohen, and you're recognized.
Yeah. I just, I want to say Commissioner White respectfully, I don't, I understand the question you're asking, which is a mathematical question. I would ask a bit of a different question. And that is this, and I apologize, I'm having a little trouble reading it. But the evaluation of redistricting criteria, the Board of County Commissioners will target a 0% retrogression, no negative change of minority composition in districts. So, I think the question is, do the maps satisfy that question? And that, that may not be able to be answered with the same level of precision that you're seeking. There may be differences of opinion about that. I can tell you, though, that for me, as I was, was, was trying to put map G together, I viewed 39 as something of a finish line in the sense that I felt like if I didn't get over it, that I, that I wasn't, that I wasn't satisfying the condition. But, 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 you know, I think that it's, to some degree, it's in the eye of the beholder. I'm not, I'm not sure it can be answered with that, with that level of precision. But I do, but I do recall in our, in our last meeting, issues were raised related to .1 and .2 percentage point. Maps were, were, were discussed, evaluating them against each other based on these very small percentage variances.
And so, at this point, there's no further discussion. We have a motion on the floor to move forward with revised maps E and F and new map G to go out to public comment. We have a motion by Commissioner Overman. It was seconded by Commissioner Cohen. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
I'm having trouble with mine.
Motion carried 5 to 2. Commissioners Hagan and Myers voted no.
Okay. And with that, do we, I don't think we have any thing else to announce. So, we, Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
I've got a question. I guess this is, I don't know if this is for Brandon or for Mary Helen. We're going to advertise the maps. They come back, say the board wants to, based on the comments or whatever reason, wants to tweak, change. Can you again explain the difference, if you can, of what would require additional public announcement, or what latitude the board has to make changes when it comes back? That's still a little unclear.
Right.
I know it's material, or, I don't know where that line's drawn.
Substantial is the word. Substantial changes. So, it's analogous to when we advertise for an ordinance, and you have to make a judgment call. If the board changes the ordinance, is it enough of a change that the title that was noticed needs to be re-noticed? So, it's going to be a judgment call. I think if there's little tweaks, the intent of this, because of the genesis that, that made this change come about, was a completely new map. So, I think that you have latitude to make, you know, tweaks and changes to it, as long as it's not a, you know, a major change.
Okay.
But that's going to be one of the degree that the board will decide with, with our help.
Okay. And then, hopefully this won't happen, but if there are material changes, we do have the time to go out again.
Yes.
With public notice, should that happen. Hopefully, it won't, but.
Yes, Commissioner. For the record, Brendan Wagner, you're correct. So, we have scheduled November 8th and November 16th for the two public hearings for the board to make a decision. To your example, if you choose to make an entirely new map or make substantive changes to the process, there are two meeting-free weeks in December in which the board can convene and make a decision. We would have to advertise that change for two weeks, as we have to advertise these maps for four. So, we would probably have the second week in December for you all to be able to come back together and make a final, final decision.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you for that answer. I think it was important to recognize, you know, kind of where we are. So, if I understood, I heard, is if we had maps that were submitted, that are revisions of the three that we're advertising now, and they were advertised as map E revised again, or map G revised, or map, you know, F revised, so they are basically the same map with some tweaking, then we would move forward versus if we had a whole new map submitted that would require us to address those significant change in December? Is that what I understood you to say?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Okay. And seeing no further questions and hearing no further comments, we're adjourned.